Adequate notice of this planning board meeting was sent by email to the Asbury Park Press and the CoStar, our official newspapers on March 3, 2021. And notice on the bulletin board and the municipal website.
Right. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nice that everyone was muted. Let me sit there alone. Thank you.
Take roll call. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Forte.
Here.
Mr. Protonentis.
Yes.
Mr. Cavalli.
Here.
All right, we'll start with our workshop discussion. Talk about this evening's application. Doug, if you don't mind giving us a little background and summary.
Sure. This evening, we have a minor subdivision. Block 101 lot 10, basically one lot into two. The parcel is in the R75 zone. It's a corner lot and what the applicant is proposing to do is with the one lot that's oversized for the R75 zone, 10,000 square feet and divided into two parcels. Really following the criteria of the R50 zone. It's not an R50. It's your R75 and as a result of that, the applicant requires if they are successful, a number of variances in the R75 zone. Interior lot requires 7,000 square feet. The interior lot they're proposing in this instance will have 5,000. The interior lot for the excuse me, the corner lot for the parcel would be 9,000. And for the corner lot here, they are proposing 5,000. Frontage, they require variance for frontage with regard to the corner lot where 50 feet or excuse me, where 60 feet 50 feet are proposed. Minimum front yard setbacks recall that with regard to a corner lot, you have two front yards, if you will. There will be a variance for the existing corner lot where the front yard setback at present is going to be posed at 15 instead of 20. There will be rear yard setback variances required where 40 feet should be provided and 30 feet are being provided. Minimum lot shape diameter wherein 30 feet should be provided and 25 feet are provided for the corner lot. Building coverage, they're exceeding their building coverage where 30% should not be exceeded and they're proposing 37%. So largely what you're seeing is, you know, trying to create two lots by the R50 criteria. Anecdotally, I note that even if you were in the R50, you'd still need 6,000 square feet for a corner lot. I don't know what the applicant is proceeding under a C1 or C2 variance. Basically, they'll be obliged to show your, their proofs as to whether or not they're going on a C1 or a C2. C1 obviously is a hardship variance where they need to show that because of existing conditions of site, they can't meet the criteria. To the extent that it's an existing, though oversized, but technically conforming lot to the R75 zone. We'll have to see what they come up with to demonstrate that there is a hardship there. C2 variance is, as we've talked about in the past, that there is a better, in a sense, design option for this property than what the municipality has designated that as an R75. Again, the number of exhibits, to the extent that you've had an opportunity to review our consulting engineers. Document very thorough, covers all the variance relief that's required. It's over Jerry's signature as well as Steve Bell's. They note the relief that you need to have for the C variance. In addition to those, again, a single lot into two. We want to make sure that they're going to provide some testimony that, that again, I always say in the positive that if curbs and sidewalks have been installed or that if not installed, that they will install them and post performance guarantees to make sure that those improvements are made. That the subdivision does not require the extension of municipal facilities at the expense of municipality. Again, if you opt and believe that the applicant carried the day, usually we want to require separate service to each one of the lots. That the subdivision will not result in affecting or adversely affecting drainage in the paters basin. That the subdivision will not adversely affect the development of the remaining parcels. That the subdivision is not in any conflict with a provision of the master plan, official map or the development regulations. And that no portion of the property have been involved or constituted a minor subdivision in three years proceeding. Usually also, we like to have the opinion of the applicant that if they grant or if we grant the relief that they're seeking that additional variance relief will not be necessary to develop the property in accordance with their plan. Usually we like to see these done within a period of time that the, at least the subdivision is perfected according to the math filing laws and that they get started on their variance relief within a year of it being granted. So that's pretty much your application in our 75 lot, corner lot where the applicant in this instance, for lack of a better way to describe it, is trying to apply the R50 criteria. The applicant is obliged to demonstrate all of its proofs. You're not obliged to make those proofs for the applicant. They need to establish the hardship criteria. In addition, they are also asking for some waivers. They're asking for a waiver for the environmental, from the environmental impact statement. They're asking for a waiver from the submission of stormwater management and they're asking for a waiver for a traffic report. And waivers are not variances. These are usually the checklist criteria, but in order to obtain the waiver, usually the applicant should be providing some testimony that they're entitled to the waiver, that they don't need this information to make a determination on their application. And usually it's appropriate to ask from our engineer if they're in favor of the granting of the waiver or to have them weigh in on the rationale for the waivers given by the applicant. That's your application this evening. We don't have any other applications, but we do have, I believe, a presentation from the Environmental Commission, April. Are they going to be doing that this evening?
Yes.
Okay. So they'll be making a presentation to you.
The one thing I would say to the board is that the Environmental Commission presentation really is for us to, to hear the comments. We don't necessarily have to offer any opinions. If you have questions, please feel free to, to ask those questions. But this is merely presentation of pretty extensive work. I must commend the Environmental Commission for, for the work they did. It's a pretty, pretty rigorous presentation. The study they did was pretty rigorous too. So without a further ado, we can bring the Environmental Commission reps up and go through the presentation. It would be terrific.
We have Ed Lippincott here.
What if I should, should I change my name? Yeah, I'll change.
We can go with Chef Ed.
Ed. Just for the record, since we're being recorded, I should just, not everybody knows who Chef Ed is. Okay, very good. So good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time. My name's Ed Lippincott. I'm the Chair of the Belmar Environmental Commission. Longtime Belmar resident and live over on Fourth Avenue. I'm gonna screen share. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, very good. So so for the last probably year and a half, the Environmental Commission has made a tremendous effort to rewrite the environmental resource inventory. And we made a presentation to the Mayor and Council already. We had the document in a digital format for anybody who wants it or hasn't seen it. We provided paper copies to the Mayor and Council. We thought we provided enough copies for the planning board, zoning board, whoever might need them. So they also suggested that we prepare a presentation for the planning board as well. So I'll try not to take up too much more of your time. Want to thank Krista Spurger, who lives on Eighth Avenue for, who's the graphic designer who put together this terrific PowerPoint presentation for me to share. So I'm going to have to take off my glasses because I can't see. Basically, the Environmental Commission is established for the purpose of protection, development, use of natural resources, including water resources within the borough. Part of our duties are to keep records of our meetings and make an annual report to the Mayor and Council. We used to meet at the Belmar Public Library before the shutdown started, but obviously we've been meeting on Zoom, just like everybody else. And then the last point there is prepare and keep an index of all open, open land areas in the borough. So that was a part of the work we did with the environmental resource inventory. I'm not going to read all of this, but the middle part there says that the Environmental Commission should make recommendations to the planning board with respect to plans and programs for inclusion in the borough's master plan and with respect to development and use of open land areas. And then advertise, prepare, print and distribute max books, et cetera, et cetera. So that's where the environmental resource inventory came in. The Belmar ERI is an assessment and inventory of all natural resources in the community. It's a reference for the borough to use in the master plan and as a basis for a planning board ordinances and land management. It's also an educational tool for the resources for the, for the residents. I'm sorry. And I believe that April, we gave her a copy and it's posted on the borough website. And as I said earlier, the printed copies are available to anybody who needs them at Borough Hall, including the Belmar Public Library. Okay, this is the original ERI was prepared with a grant that we got from ANJEC. And we hired a consultant and we used a couple of professionals to go around and it probably took us a year to write the original environmental resource inventory. And it's a very extensive document, the history of Belmar and geography and, you know, the old, old history of how the borough was formed and what was here for Ocean Beach and et cetera, all very, very interesting. And then it breaks down the town into the seven different zones you see there. Beach residential, downtown, the western residential area, which would be over by the tennis courts, Shark River inlet, Silver Lake and Lake Como.
Ed, what was ANJEC? Can you explain what that is?
I'm sorry. The Association of Jersey Environmental Commissions. So there's a state organization for, to his ANJEC and they provide us with, they all, lots of small grants. We've gotten grants from them to do beach plantings and things like that, but it was a pretty, pretty substantial grant that they gave us to, to do the environmental resource inventory originally.
Great.
And that's, you know, we pay dues to them. It's very reasonable, but all of the Environmental Commission members are allowed, they have seminars that they offer to all new planning Environmental Commission members and they do things about stormwater management and writing an ERI and what are the, what are the duties of an environmental commission? It's all very, very interesting stuff. And free to all of our members. Okay, okay. So these are the major updates that we made. We felt that the ERI really needed an update after Hurricane Sandy because I don't know about anybody else, but I've lived in Belmar since I was like two months old and I thought I knew the town pretty good. And man, Sandy was a real eye opener for me. I've been through a lot of storms, a lot of nor'easters, a lot of hurricanes. And that was whole like next level stuff. I found out where all the, where all the flood zones were after that, including in my own neighborhood. Areas that were low water that I had no idea. So we felt that the ERI needed an update after that. So we went ahead and did that. So number one, the latest water quality reports that DEP posts for Enter Cock Eye, which is an indication of fecal matter in the, in the water. They do testing at the ocean, usually at Fifth Avenue behind Cruz Bay, behind Taylor Pavilion and the L Street Beach. So those, those, that data and those links are all on the environmental resource inventory. Updated NJDEP and FEMA maps because all the FEMA maps have been changed as, I'm sure you guys are well aware. So that all those, all that data and all those links are included in the, in the ERI. Extensively, we, we catalogued the effects of Hurricane Sandy, a lot of pictures, you know, before and after. This is what, you know, this is what it used to look like and this is what happened. This is what it looked like the day after Sandy. We also included the Seaport redevelopment, which has gone through some changes since the original document was prepared. And the last two, number five and six are the engineering projects that helped with flood mitigation for both Silver Lake and Lake Como. Some of the other things we've been encouraging and trying to promote in town is the use of what is called the Belmar Green Building Checklist. And its goal is to reduce the use of energy, water and resources and improve well-being for the residents from a, from a building and from a planning perspective. Energy efficient designs and construction in site conditions, water management, energy use, material selections, light pollution and indoor environments. Increasing energy efficiency and conservation. And increase the amount of energy produced from renewable resources. And third, the use of recycled and renewable materials in new construction and renovation projects to reduce construction waste. These are a list of things to consider in green building considerations. Now, part of the, part of the reason, and I don't know if you, any of you were able to make Krista's presentation at the Taylor Pavilion. Krista lives on Eighth Avenue. Her house, she was out of her house for almost three years after Hurricane Sandy. From flood damage to her house. And she belongs to an organization called New Jersey Organizing Project. And they do a lot of work in trying to help people get back into their homes after Hurricane Sandy. But one of the things that is a part of their, a part of their research and a part of their work is the changes to the FEMA flood maps, but also the, the changes that are coming in the federal flood insurance program. So we felt that the green building checklist and the updated ERI was important because these things are all going to have a significant effect in Belmar in the future because of the increased, increased flooding in town caused by climate change. And if, if you hadn't had a chance to see Krista's presentation, it's, it's a real eye opener about what we can expect if current trends continue, what we can expect to see in Belmar in the future. So this is one of the slides from, from Krista's presentation about flood mitigation and sea level rise. And that's, you can see that's the Shark River and all the areas in shaded there in blue that can expect to see future impacts from, from sea level rise. By 2100, we are poised to lose more than 600 homes, a chronic inundation. Significant impacts with one degree rise in global temperature. Impacts could be felt as soon as 2030 in the K Street area and Route 35 over by, by the L Street Beach. Can't see the edge of the slide here. So as a borough, they, there is a credit rating system as far as flood, flood insurance goes, called the Community Credit Rating System. And it's going to require buildings to be built four feet above the flood plain. Improve stormwater runoff, mitigate against future storms and sea level rise. And the federal flood insurance program will give Belmar a rating based on how well we do taking these matters into consideration going forward. And I think that was the last slide I have. It is. And then there was one other thing that I wanted to share. I'm going to go out of this screen. Was to send me one more, one more slide. That I'm going to bring up here we are. See if I can get this full scale. This, can you see that?
Yes.
All right. I don't think I can make it any bigger. Oh, there we go. So this is lots, 87 block, block 87 lots, one, two and three, the Belmar Motor Lodge and the Water View Pavilion, which made the presentation to the Mayor and Council the other day. And this shows the flood, the flood maps that FEMA is going to be using the AE11 zone. So anything in this zone is going to have to be four feet above flood plain. And you can see how it already impacts that, that property right there. So one of the, one of the proposals they made was for underground parking and that's, it's probably going to be a problem. So so that's it. That's really all I had. I, I tried to keep the presentation short because I know, you know, times of the essence. I didn't want to take up too much of your time. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions if you have any.
Any questions, anyone?
Just about the green building checklist. Is that something we're actively using right now?
Not that I'm aware of. I know in the past, they had in the original Seaport redevelopment plan, they had what they called a LEEDS checklist and it was, there was a checklist that the developers had to use in order to get a certain amount of points. But that went away when they redid the Seaport redevelopment plan. So this is something we're encouraging now.
For, for all construction or in certain zones?
It would be, it would be appropriate in all construction. Every little bit is going to help when it comes to, comes to, you know, reducing the impacts on the environment.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Kovats?
I, just very briefly, Ed, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
I think you, I think you hit the high marks. Is there a way in which the Environmental Commission, and I don't know this perhaps April already does, and I'm maybe showing my ignorance, but is there a way in which the Environmental Commission is made aware of the applications that come before the planning board so that you can have an opportunity to weigh in and express concerns? Because I imagine a number of things are more at your fingertips than they are for the planning board members. So at least they could be highlighted as to those concerns that you have.
We try to, to stay abreast of what's coming down the pipe. And now we have Nick Valenti and Tom Burke are both members of the Environmental Commission. So they keep us appraised of, of what's coming. In the past, we always used to get, we used to see the applications ahead of time. But I think what happened, I think the, the, either the planning board or the Environmental Commission changed the night of the week or the night of the month that they were meeting. And all the schedules got kind of messed up. So we're trying to, we're trying to get back, back in the loop here about, you know, looking at the plans before they go to the environment, before they go to the planning board so that we can make any recommendations that we have. The one advantage we do have is that I sit on the TDRC. So anything that goes to the TDRC, I usually get to have input there before it winds up on the planning board's inbox.
Right now for members of the, of the board and members of the public who may be tuning in, so to speak. TDRC is our in a sense, pre-game, pre-review of applications in the Seaport redevelopment areas. It's generally limited to the commercial development so that, in a sense, the technical review is involving utilities, environmental commission weigh in. All those things that more into the nuanced area of development and whether or not it fits within the redevelopment criteria is reviewed by a committee designated by or identified in our ordinances. So that when we receive those applications for the commercial applications and Seaport redevelopment areas, they have had an opportunity to weigh in as to their review so that we can get down to more planning issues before the planning board.
Yeah, Ed, I don't know whether we can get back to the Environmental Commission recommendations, but I know in my past, I used to see that and that was always helpful. And I agree that, you know, certainly having two members of the board could help us elaborate on the recommendations, but you know, to Tom's point, maybe that green checklist becomes a part of that as well as anything else. But I think that will be helpful for the board to just keep their eye on the ball, if you will, in terms of some of these environmental options, I'll call it, that we can discuss with applicants as they come before us.
And again, if I could to the chair, just, and I'm sure Ed is aware of this, but just for the benefit of the, the members, the New Jersey Environmental Protection came out with tweaking some of their stormwater resources. The regulations have been on the books since 2018 and Jared may want to speak to this also because I imagine we're going to have to revamp our stormwater ordinances because as of March 2nd, the regulations went into effect. And to give you sort of a shorthand way, the new regulations have changed sort of the overriding view that we have with regard to stormwater management. Basically what our rules and our requirements are with regard to stormwater management is to make a little more decentralized and in a sense mimic or mirror the natural water cycle, the rain cycle we see instead of like transporting large portions of water off-site and getting them to a river to instead design our stormwater management so that it's, it's more localized. You're talking about percolation more into the, into the soils. Again, mirroring more with the natural water cycle is, and I'm sure Ed, his group have, will probably be providing us recommendations concerning rain gardens, those types of things. So that instead of having large sheet removal of stormwater, we try to keep it onsite.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. In the past, it was always just to get the water off the site and into the storm sewers and more and more they've encouraged infiltration, getting the water back into the ground. And, or at least filtering it properly before it goes. And if I'm not mistaken, the new stormwater rules are going to require all developments, even redevelopments to lower their impervious cover as, as opposed to that. But this, the Environmental Commission is still looking at the changes in the new stormwater rules and how it's going to affect what we have to say about it.
Any thoughts, Jerry?
Yeah, I can add a little bit to that. We have dedicated staff here that have been following this now for quite some time. Gentleman named Turner Shell, who used to work at DEP, also the county. He's heading that up. We have been keeping the borough up to date on everything that they need to do, including posting maps and things like that on the website, the borough's website. Also, I think Ed mentioned FEMA. The borough has elected to be very aggressive with the FEMA categorization and I believe we have a rating of six now, which is pretty good for municipality of our size and our location. So the administration is pushing on the FEMA side as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
And for the board members that haven't looked at the, the documents, is that posted on the website, April, the EFI?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I would really encourage you to go take a look at it. It's, it's really a nice piece of work, Ed. You and your, your commission should be very proud of that.
Yeah, the person who took lead on that is, his name is Nozer Mehta. He lives on 16th Avenue. Did a really tremendous job doing all the, the, laying out all the graphics and all that stuff. It really, like I said, probably a year and a half of work, but Nozer was really the point man on that. So
It shows.
And if anybody needs a copy, we could just get you your own digital copy for you to keep on your hard drive or on a thumb drive. And if anybody needs a copy, we could just get you your own digital copy for you to keep on your hard drive or on a thumb driver, whatever you like.
I certainly wouldn't mind having a copy. I don't know if I can copy it from the website, but maybe you can get that to April and.
I can, I have an email that's everybody. I can reforward that email if you need me to.
There you go.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Very informative.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, April, I'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
I just want to note first that Bill Lindsey has joined us.
Yes, he is.
Can you guys hear me? My apologies. I, I, I changed a, apparently I changed the password on a cell phone about two weeks ago. And it, and it carried forth through two lap, to two laptops and to two tablets that I have and Zoom just. Had me install, reinstall everything. I apologize for the delay. I, I did get to see most of Mr. Lippincott's presentation and. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I'm glad you made it.
Don't, don't ever change a password without thinking about. Where else, where else it goes, right?
Yep, the pain of it. Next on the agenda was to be the oath of office for Sal Marchese. A couple of comments. Due to some personal reasons, Sal will be unable to continue as a member of the planning board. I want to, I want to first thank him for the time and commitment he's given to the board over the years. And I'd also ask the board members to keep him in your prayers. He's got, he's got a personal fight going on and he could really use our support, so. If you don't mind, you know, keep him in your prayers and let's, let's hope for the best for Sal. But once again, thank you, Sal, for your commitment.
God bless you, Sal.
Next up, can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes from the January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one meeting?
I'll offer it.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey.
All right, Mr. McDermin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Mr. Protonendez?
Yes.
Mr. Carvallo?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have one application on the docket this evening, that of John and Jacqueline Camidge. April, if you would please bring them into the meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because my sister was noticed, she lives within the two hundred foot radius of the applicant. I'm going to recuse myself on this application.
All right, thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, I see Barry is on John and Mr. DeFaco, correct?
Yes.
And I guess we should start with John and swearing in the witnesses and we could go from there.
John, if you could bring everybody forward so we can spare everybody all at once, if that's convenient. If not, we can swear them in individually. Before they testify. What's your pleasure? John, I think you're still on mute.
Is there anyone else that needs to be brought up?
Are the homeowners testifying in any way, John? We might have to go to nodding with you, John. We're not getting any verbal.
It's just the three of us.
Okay.
John, you're still on mute.
How about now?
Yeah.
All right.
Which is with us, you can hear us.
My apologies. I was slow on the button there.
Sorry, just to confirm what April said, there's only going to be two witnesses this evening, Mr. De.
That's correct.
Gentlemen, may I ask you to? You saw me swear or affirm the testimony you give before, probably the truth, the whole truth?
Yes.
Yes, from Mr. DeFaco is that also?
I didn't hear Mr. DeFaco.
Yes. Okay, so the witnesses are sworn.
I don't really look like this either. The camera's wacky, so.
I know. You, you look wonderful.
Yeah, you look great.
Just, just by way of background, if I can, so I can get out of the way of your application, Mr. Holmbeck. And we agreed to mark the development application plus the checklist of eleven pages as A1.
Good.
Can we mark the, I guess, the permit? The minor land use zoning permit inclusive of denial as A2, that's dated twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. And if I didn't put it on the record, I believe the application was a date of January fourteenth, twenty twenty one. The subdivision plat marked as A3 and note that subdivision plat includes the minute. Property owners within two hundred feet, existing conditions and demolition plan, the minor subdivision plan. The key slash zoning map, general notes, R seventy five zone criteria. Planting detail, sidewalk detail, concrete apron section, vertical herb, paver detail. All prepared on the minor subdivision plat, Mark C. Phone. Lakeland survey, date of February third, twenty twenty one. Will mark that as A3. A4, we received a document. I guess we may have to cover this a little more in, in detail on this document, maybe a little of what here. This is a document that appears to be handmarked. Concerning it's identified as minor subdivision plat for this parcel. It appears to be a document wherein there is a marked up undersized corner lots, undersized interior lots. And then lots of fifty feet wide. And I, we'll get to this as to whether or not this was available to the public ten days. If not, we can cover it by way of what here, I believe. A5 is a survey of the property. Aired. And Lakeland survey, January twenty five, twenty twenty one, again, Mark C. Phone. Mark that as A5 and I believe the applicant has received, if not, let me know. The. Review of our consulting engineer dated March fifth, twenty twenty one. Over the signature of Mr. Frida and also Ms. Bell will mark that as PB for planning board one.
That has been received.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the documents that I have received for your application this evening. If there's anything else. Please let me know so that we can market, even if it comes up in the middle. But right now we have A through, A1 through A5 and PB one. Anything else, Mr. Holmbeck?
No, that's, that's the complete set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move on, Mr. Holmbeck, I know Mr. DeFaco has been before this board before, but if we could get the benefit of his credentials. As a matter of record, I would appreciate it.
I was, I was wondering how the board was going to treat that because I know he's been here once or twice, but. There's no, no, no harm in, in doing it again. Rich. Can you briefly? Give us your professional CV and your experience in testifying before this board and other boards, if you would, please?
Certainly, licensed engineer since nineteen seventy seven, planner since nineteen eighty one. I own JKR Engineering. We prepared probably fifty plus site plans and subdivisions before the Delmar Board. Since nineteen. I think nineteen ninety two was the first one we did in Delmar. So with twenty to thirty years of experience here, we, we work in Monmouth County primarily, also Ocean County. We work for private developers, not for municipalities, so we're a private engineering firm. And I've testified before the Supreme Court, Monmouth County. As well as zoning boards, planning boards in your town and pretty much every town in Monmouth County since we started work.
Thank you, Mr. DeFaco. We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Just a moment. Is the expertise that you're offering which area or both is that?
In both, planning and engineering.
Thank you.
Mr. Kovats, would you, would this be an appropriate time for Rich to, to speak to A4 since we're going to be talking about that? You were talking about having to voir dire, the person who created that.
Oh, yes. I guess my question is, you know, was that available to folks ten days before this meeting?
That was sent to. The clerk. I don't have the date in front of me, Barry or Rich, you recall?
So that's not ten days, no.
Okay, can you just briefly walk us through as to how that was created, by who, and what it intends to represent?
Yes, and basically it, it is your tax map that is copied on that sheet. So there's one new information here. And all I did was look at the tax map sheet. And identify on that, easy visuals, which lots are undersized, which lots are. Fifty feet wide and which lots are corner lots. So it was more of a visual to help you because I could just explain it if you look at. The sheets of the tax map of Borough Records, which is a public document between, between Eighth Street and Twelfth. Yeah, from Eighth Avenue to Twelfth Avenue and from A to C, you'll see a block. Pretty much, and our site is in the center of that block. And I can describe to you what I've noticed on the tax map, but that is what I did on A4, if you want to call it A4. It's a, just a copy of the borough's tax map. With just highlighted colors to indicate the size and shapes of existing lots.
Just in the creation of this document, did you, did you physically walk the areas to confirm the information that you've identified? Because I, and my difficulty is, it's. Again, your eyesight may be much better than mine, but it's difficult to get. Sizes of lots and you've, you've indicated that there's undersized corner lots, there's undersized interior lots. That were you in the original document to have?
Yes, the original tax map, okay, the tax map is labeled clearly, for instance, fifty feet by one hundred feet. So that would be a five thousand square foot lot and every lot labeled on the tax map clearly with dimensions.
Okay, did you do anything to physically go out and confirm those dimensions?
No, it was all checked with the tax map and the arrow photograph like from Google, but no physical onsite measurements were taken.
Okay.
I feel confident.
Taking the information on the tax map as being accurate, you then developed this yourself.
That is correct. I believe the tax is accurate.
That covers all the questions I have. I don't know if there are any other questions by any other members of the board, but I think in terms of. It being eligible and being relevant for your hearing, I think it passes those tests. It certainly is evidential.
Thank you, Mr. Kovats. Um. Rich, if I could start you out with. Your observation of the current. Structure that's on this lot that you. Investigated and learned about as part of your work on this application. If you could give the board. An overview of what you found there in terms of its use, in terms of its, of the building's location on the property. And any other aspects of it that you find important.
Okay, so. Lot ten, existing lot ten. In closing condition is a ten thousand square foot lot. And contains a two and a half story, eight bedroom, non-conforming multifamily use. So right off the bat, we have a nonconformity in the way that the property being a life. Number two, the dwelling is two point one foot setback from B Street. Thirteen point nine foot rear yard. And the front porch on Eleventh Avenue measures only ten feet to the right of the line. So there's, there's three setback variations that exist on the site. The lot is over the lot coverage requirements of the boroughs. It's at fifty three point seven percent lock coverage where forty percent is maximum allowable. The building coverage is over the maximum allowable at twenty eight point six percent where only twenty percent is allowable. The house and the outdoor pool are in state of severe disrepair. While the onsite parking provides three spaces. It is nonconforming in width. Maximum by code is ten feet for driveway. Parking stall sizes are substandard being only thirteen feet by eight feet. Causing parking to be partially within the borough's right of way when a car parks on the existing parking area. Onsite parking technically meets the code of three spaces or three or more bedrooms, but there's eight bedrooms here. And I feel it's inadequate parking for eight bedrooms. So we have a eight bedroom, nonconforming use. We have three setback variances, lock coverage, building coverage. And parking not really per code, only the existing condition. John, that's what I saw as existing condition.
Thank you. The dimension of this lot appears to my unprofessional eye to be shorter than the other lots on this block. Can you explain to the board if that's true and if it is true, how did that occur?
Well, if you wanted to look at, or I could tell you about exhibit eight four, but over, over time, most of the lots. Within a three by four block area of our site. Are only. Fifty feet wide and, and more than half of them are only one hundred feet deep. So there are thirty eight corner lots within the blocks between. Get my exact number here, hold on. Thirty eight corner lots between A Street and C Street and from Twelfth Avenue to Ninth Avenue. Of those thirty eight lots existing, twenty or five thousand square feet. That's fifty three percent of the lots. Thirty five or fifty feet wide. That's ninety two percent of the lots are corner lots being only fifty feet wide. And the four lots adjacent to our site to the north are five thousand square feet. Of course, the street, the southwest corner is also a five thousand, it's a fifty foot wide corner lot. So those historically, the side streets. Turned the two mid-block lots facing the other street. The, the, A. Which resulted in the corner lot remaining on the streets. Being only a hundred feet deep. And that happens historically throughout the R seventy five zone. Having ninety two percent of the lots in that zone. Only being fifty feet wide and the ordinance says you need to be. Six, whatever it is, sixty or seventy feet. Eight, there are no lots really that comply with that except. Eight percent of them. So it's really not a typical thing. It's typical that they don't comply.
And the lots on the, in the middle of the block are, they appear to be longer, they're.
Right, they're one fifty, one fifty deep by fifty feet wide.
It seems that the development of these. Single family homes on what I'll call the cross streets creates an issue on these corner lots that makes them. Uniquely different for that part of the neighborhood, correct?
That's correct. They don't have the depth that is mid-block lot now.
And A4. Shows us the significant number of these. Sort of unusually short lots in, in, in the neighborhood, correct?
Correct. And the numbers I gave you were just the three blocks. A, A Street, B Street, C Street, and then from. Ninth to twelfth, the map shows you additional blocks in the, in the area beyond that close proximity. But the close proximity to our lot, which is at B and Eleventh. Is thirty eight, thirty eight corner lots that are basically studied in that A4 exhibit that show that. More than half of them are five thousand square feet and ninety two percent of them are fifty feet wide.
So the subdivision of this lot into two fifty foot frontage lots would. In, in essence, in terms of lot width anyway, be consistent with. This, the width of the lots throughout this neighborhood.
I, I believe so. That's a yes to that question. Most of the lots are fifty feet wide in the R seventy five zone. I, I believe so. That's a yes to that question. Most of the lots are 50 feet wide in the R75 zone.
And this subdivision would create uh, two single-family residents as opposed to a nonconforming multifamily building that's on the property now, correct?
That's also correct.
Okay, have you had a chance to review um, the uh, March 5th letter from the Boroughs engineer with respect to this application?
I did, yes.
So if I turn to the engineer's section two, um, he points out that this, that this application would require a variance for lot size, correct?
That is correct.
And given the uh, inherent shortness, the uh, the, the current shape of this lot in a 50-foot, with two 50-foot frontage lots, there's really no way to get to the 7,500 square feet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and with respect to the corner lot, if we can't get to 75, we probably can't get to 9, 9,000 either, correct?
Correct, yes.
So um, but if, a- as I looked at this, I, I thought that if the rest of the block has 50-foot frontages, how would it be possible for someone to end up with, with, with a 9,000 square foot lot? And, and keep the, without shorting some other lot?
No, there's no way to do it on one lot in this zone. Unless you happen to have historically a lot that was larger, and there aren't that many in the zone. There are some, but there are far and few between that are at zoning uh, dimensions.
And according to uh, A4, you've noted that generally the solution was to have two 50-foot lots uh, that are slightly undersized.
That's correct, yeah.
The corner lot would normally be seen to have two front yards, correct?
That's also correct, yes.
So the applicant seeking a variance on the on one of those front yards, the front yard that would border B Street, correct?
Yeah.
So um, in, in, in order for the two homes to sit there and to have appropriate driveways on this uniquely shaped lot, you, it would be appropriate in your view that a variance for the side yard, or that front yard setback that would be considered a side yard setback be, be granted?
Well, yes, just one thing to clarify for the board's uh, consideration. The Boroughs ordinance has a lot setback provision where an adjacent house, if it's closer to the right of way than your house, you can utilize the setback of the neighbor's house or your house so that they line up. Uh, spoke to Ted about that. And the neighbor to the north of us, Lot number nine, his home is about five or six feet from the right of way line. So our proposal for 15 feet is an extra 10 feet back from the neighbor's house. So while under one code, the 20-foot is required for setback under provision of the ordinance with the neighbor's house, and I would say that would eliminate the need for a variance. So there's two ways to look at it, but I think if you look at it as Ted and I discussed, we do not need that variance since the neighbor's home is closer than our home would be. Mr. Kovats, you understand what I'm saying?
No, 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 but I'm, I'm authorized on cross-examination.
With respect to the um, rear yard setback, um, the applicant seeking a, a variance from the uh, from the 40-foot requirement in, in this district to uh, to 30 feet, correct?
That's correct.
And it, compared to the existing uh, setback that's there, how, how does this uh, compare actually?
Existing building is 13.9 feet, so we're more than doubling the setback, although it's substantial. It's a lot further from the northerly property line than the 13.9 feet. And, and one important thing to, to keep in mind is that our lot coverage is in compliance with the code. So one of the key things that I think is important for development is that if your lot coverage is in compliance, you're not pushing the envelope. I mean, your building may be over, and we're over on building coverage, but overall, the impervious and the pavers and the buildings is in compliance. So for the R75 zone, we are in compliance with lot coverage, which affects your runoff and your drainage and things like that.
Not that I want to jump ahead, but since you did mention pavers, these are pervious pavers that we're talking about here?
Yes, they would be.
Thank you. The applicant also seeks uh, a variance for a lot, for a minimum lot shape diameter. And I believe that's a function of the size of the corner lot, correct?
Yeah, but that is also based upon the, the 20-foot setback.
Right.
Uh, if we were to, for instance, say that we use the six-foot setback of the neighbor's home, then we would comply with the circle, with the lot-shaped circle diameter on our lot, but again, reading it right from the chart, we need a variance without applying that section of the ordinance about front setback.
Okay, in terms of lot coverage, um, the, the applicant seeks 37%.
Building coverage, you said, not lot, building.
I'm sorry, building coverage, my, my mistake, my apologies. Um, in terms of the size of the home, do you feel that they're appropriate for the size of a lot?
I do. And again, based on lot coverage, we meet the code on that. The lot meets FAR, we're not seeking a FAR variance. But we have a covered porch, and we have a shed. Those things add a few percentage points to that number. If we had no porch and no shed, we'd be down at around 30, I think 34% and change. And we're allowed 30%, so it's not a tremendous jump from what allowed, mainly due to the shorter, again, the 100-foot depth and the 5,000 square feet, we're dividing by you know, smaller numbers, so you're getting larger percentages. But we have bigger setbacks in the rear. It's why we're lot coverage. So the building coverage is really a function of the smaller lot area for the house that's typical to the zone and typical to the street. The house is not overs, not oversized for the zone or the neighborhood. But when you do the math and divide it by 5,000, it appears that the percentage exceeds the 30% by 7%.
Thank you. Um, could you speak for a moment about how the development of the two homes will change the parking from its current format to to its new uh, format?
Parking would be three parking spaces per dwelling, a total of six parking spaces. The parking on street would basically, I think, almost increase by a space. Typically on 11th Avenue, you have 50-foot lots, and everyone has a driveway. And on most cases, there's two parking spaces between each neighbor's driveway. So similarly, on our 11th Avenue site, we would have a driveway and on the uh, Easterly lot, and two parking spaces in front of the Easterly lot. And on the Westerly lot, there are no driveways, since that driveway is proposed on B Street. We would have two parking spaces at the west end of 11th Avenue at the corner, just west of that, of the lot. On B Street, the driveway now has a 24-foot curb opening, and that would be reduced to 12-foot, which would, right now, there's, there's four large parking spaces. I doubt there's five. It's like, you can probably get four SUVs there, but whatever, we're increasing that length by another 12, 13 feet, so you might get an spot on B Street by us narrowing the driveway to a single entrance driveway rather than the wide three-car entrance they have today. So we'll have six off-street parking spaces and either even or up one on, on-street parking after we're done. We're not going to lose any parking spaces on the street. We may gain one on B. This depends who parks there, a small car, a large car, but there's going to be extra room on B Street. And I still believe there'll be four on 11th. So they'll have adequate parking, they'll have on-street parking with maybe an increase of but meet the code in either case. The variation we're seeking on the lot on the corner is that the driveway width is more than 10 feet wide. We come in at 10 and we clear out to 18 to provide three onsite parking spaces. Now, the parking, the neighborhood is typically loaded with wide driveways. On our street, to 08 and to 06, 11th Avenue have extra wide driveways. Across the street on 11th at 217, 215, 211, 209, 205, and 207, those have extra wide driveways across the street from our site. On B Street, Lot 1, Block 102, and Lot 7, Block 101, which is down near the corner of uh, 10th, those have extra wide driveways, but they're on B Street, right up the street from us on B. So there's, you know, a dozen homes within 300 feet of us that have extra wide driveways. The neighborhood is typically extra wide driveways and equally amount of 10-foot driveways. So we have one lot of 10, and we have one lot which is water, which is pretty much what the neighborhood's showing us. 50% of them are complying, 50% of them are not complying.
Thank you. And with respect to the tri, the site triangle referenced in the engineer's report, have you had a chance to look at that corner and, and can you tell us how that concern can be addressed?
Yes, B Street is one way to the south, and as you exit B Street, there's a stop sign before you cross over 11th. And 11th is a two-way street with a stop sign at B, so as you cross, it's like a, that's a four-way stop sign there. So the ordinance requires a 25-foot by 25-foot site triangle. In our instance, the stop bar on B Street is located behind a crosswalk, which is a good 20 feet back from the curb line. Uh, I believe that if we apply the ASHTO, which is the American Association of State Highway Official Handbook Design Standard, which is used by the DOT and all the highway development, which provides for a minimum of 15 feet back from a curb line and 10 times the speed limit on the other street. They were provided side triangle of 15 by 250, as opposed to the 25 by 25 side triangle from the 1920s when they made these codes. The adequacy of that is actual sight line. You see the car, gives you enough time, 250 feet to see him, not just 25 feet to see him. That would apply in both directions on B Street. Would not affect the request for the 15-foot yard setback off of B or the front porch, which would be 12, 300, 11th. That side triangle would fall within the grass area at the corner and not be impacted by the new dwelling, but would provide adequate side triangle in both directions for the people on 11th looking up B and for people on B looking eastally on 11th before they cross over. So we could provide that, and I think that'd be sufficient.
Thank you. Um, the applicant seeks a waiver for um, the environmental stormwater and, and traffic reports. Uh, do you have an opinion on why those waivers should be granted?
I mean, first of all, I think the minor, I don't think you're on the minor subdivision checklist, I could be wrong, but I don't think they even require.
I believe they are, just by way of pointing out. Looked at the checklist, I believe they are.
For the minor, okay. Well, environmentally, the site's already developed, it's got a home, it's got impervious, it's got development, there's nothing, I'd say environmentally sensitive here. It's a developed lot in the middle of a developed neighborhood. There's no endangered vegetation or species on the property. So from the environmental point of view, I think of getting rid of the older home with the older heating system and the older materials would be a benefit, including a new, up-to-date, modern, clean, energy-efficient heating system and materials on the site would be a benefit. We do meet as far as drainage, we're meeting lot coverage requirements. There are storm drains in the road right in front of the property on B Street. There's no significant change in the amount of drainage leaving the property at the development. And as far as traffic, it's zone 475, it's zone for residential. Right now, there's eight bedrooms on the site. We're going to have eight bedrooms when we're done. We're going to generate about the same number of uh, trip movements with the population of eight bedrooms on, on the site now and eight bedrooms afterward. So I don't think there's any major change in traffic. We can stop intersection, we've added with off-street parking, where now there's not off-street parking, in my opinion, and I think there's no impact on traffic, environmental or drainage. That's the reason for the waiver.
Okay, so in total, is it your opinion that the uh, the shape of, of this lot creates a hardship, especially on the corner, that uh, would require the board to issue a variance that, that we've talked about and allow the subdivision of, of this in order to properly develop this property?
I believe so. I believe that the 50-foot is common of the area, common of the zone, and the width of the lot is what's typical, and that's what we're seeking the variance for, being typical.
And do you believe that the plan as shown by the applicant um, is an improvement over what is there now?
I believe eliminating the nonconforming use is a major improvement in what's there now. Having two single-family dwellings is a better zoning alternative than having a nonconforming use, multifamily use in a residential town.
And the, and the construction of two single-family homes on 50-foot fronts would be consistent with the overall plan in, in this neighborhood?
Yes, it is, based on what A4 exhibit shows you and what I described on the three-block by four-block area around our property.
And as a result of the unique shape of this property, uh, in your opinion, would it be possible to have a 9,000 square foot corner lot and, and develop this?
No, would not be possible.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for Mr. DeFaco.
Okay, is Barry DePepe going to testify, or is he representing owners?
Uh, yes, Barry, Barry would be my next witness.
Yeah, we'll bring questions to Mr. DeFaco at the end.
All right, I didn't know what your pleasure was. Fair enough. Mr. DePepp, uh, you are one of the principals of the applicant, correct?
Correct.
And um, can you give the board an overview of what you see on the property now?
Um, yeah, I'd like to just reiterate a couple of the key points that Rich and John had expressed earlier, and maybe give you guys some of the insights that I've had just from obviously doing development in town over the last 20 years or so, and what I'm seeing along 11th Avenue, and what we're trying to accomplish at this location. Obviously, the biggest issue here is
I'm sorry. Just on a point, Jay?
Yeah.
Are, are you testifying as an expert, Mr. DePepp?
I'm testifying as the applicant.
Okay, well, Okay, well, again, I mean.
Okay.
Want to have someone qualify you as an expert? Uh, I'm not going to oppose that. That's the chair's call. If, if you're, if you're not testifying as to a fact.
John, you can.
Opinions as to what you're seeing. I want to make sure that this record is clear that at this point in time, you've not been qualified as an expert. Generally, rule of thumb, Doug Kovats' rule of thumb. If you're given opinions, you're an expert.
Right.
Qualified.
Okay, well, let me, let me.
Qualify me, please.
Mr. DePep, uh, what is your occupation?
Uh, real estate development.
And how long have you been in that profession?
Uh, thirty years.
Wow. Um, and have you developed other properties in Belmar?
Yes, I have. My partner, Sonny and Lauren, and I have developed properties since two thousand and one, I believe. We may have actually started in late ninety, nineteen nineties.
So when you look at a potential project, you look at it through. The lens of your expertise as a developer and with your knowledge of the construction industry, correct?
Correct.
So when you offer an opinion on, say, the state of a house or the condition of a house, that's based on. Your large experience in this area.
Correct.
Mr. Kovats, is that sufficient for you?
Have you ever qualified as an expert before, Mr. DePep?
No, I have not.
Okay, uh, it sounds to me as though you're, you're testifying as to your expertise of development in Belmar as a developer. For close to, let's make it a minimum of, of twenty years in Belmar and developing properties in Belmar. Does this include residential properties?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Um, I, I think you would qualify depending on what the chair's pleasure is. As an expert, as a developer of properties in and about Belmar in the past twenty years.
I agree. I think he qualifies for that. You can move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. So when you came to see this property, um, what was your opinion of the current structure and the current use of the property?
The current use is a, is a mixed use. There are apartments in there. As Richie said, there's eight bedrooms. We know for certain that there's at least. Two tenants plus the homeowner, the resident. Um, the property itself is in complete disrepair. The house. Um, has a multitude of structural problems as well as asbestos and some mold mitigation is necessary. The uh, in-ground swimming pool is inoperable. Um, essentially, everything is. A demo at this point on the property. Um, the present owners cannot. Um, make the necessary capital investment to upkeep, remodel, or um. Improve the existing property. So, you know.
So the property's seen better days.
This prop, the best days are in its rearview mirror at this point, yes. What I'd like to talk about, though, is uh, you've all are familiar with what, what I've done on Main Street, but. When we first came to Belmar years ago, we did the redevelopment of Belmar Playland on Ocean Avenue. We did the redevelopment of the Reggie's Bar and Andy's Pizza at Twelfth Avenue. And from those investments and from that redevelopment work, Ocean Avenue changed to a single-family. Um, stretch rather than a mixed commercial and different, different things were there. And that, that was an objective of the governing body at the time. And then what we see from that is, there's a. There's a reinvestment by the neighborhood, by the neighbors. Once they see um. What's happened on the oceanfront, things start to extend further west. Um, reinvestment, reconstruction, remodeling, different things, but there's a. There's some vibrancy that happens around these redevelopments. So we all know what happens on Ocean Avenue already. That's, that's transpired in the last ten to twelve years. Including right at Ocean Avenue, Eleventh Avenue, where the Walsper brothers developed uh, the properties on Ocean Avenue. What we're seeing now is Eleventh Avenue is a little bit of a, seeing a little bit of a lag. There is some reinvestment happening by homeowners. Um, some remodeling work. Um, there were some uh, renovations and newer construction done probably five or six years ago. But there's been a stall or delay, really. So when I came to this piece and understood the. The dilemma that the property owner had and, and couldn't, couldn't do the upkeep. We looked at this and said, this is an opportunity now to create a link. For the stretch of Eleventh Avenue, you know, Ocean Avenue and the ocean, and the A block. They're kind of a no-brainer. People are going to make those investments. But you want to try to get reinvestment and some, some new, newer remodeling. Even if people just upgrade their front porches and put new railings or paint their front door, put new awnings on. There's a pride of ownership that happens on that block. Um, this second avenue at B Street. Could create a really nice link to what's already happened up at the oceanfront. And start to extend that vote of confidence, if you will, a real, um. It's a positive driver, the way I look at it. Um, to start to extend maybe back as far as C Street and reinforce some more. Um, opportu- investment by the, by the neighbors. Um, lastly, I would just note that uh, my partner and I are contract purchasers for. The Shiva property at five oh three and five oh five, Eleventh Avenue, which is five blocks in on Eleventh Avenue. Um, that property will get demolished later this year and two new single-family homes will get developed. At the five hundred block on Eleventh Avenue. So. You can see that there's an opportunity now, if we can make a connection here at the corner of B Street. Maybe there's some opportunity to link that even further west along Eleventh Avenue. Um, and try to improve uh, the whole stretch of Eleventh Avenue. And that's really the motivation that we've had when we started looking at this property.
And as a developer, um, have you taken note of how the corner properties in, in this area of town have been developed?
Yes, um, I looked at that, uh, the, the tax map plan. Richie and I worked on that together. Um, one of the interesting things that I've meant, noticed also is that, as Richie said, ninety-some odd percent of the corner lots are fifty-foot wide. Your, your avenues and streets, the grid system that you have for your roadways are five hundred feet long. So if you have ten fifty-foot wide conforming lots, that's five hundred feet. How do you get sixty-foot corners at A and B? It's physically, it doesn't exist within the dimensions of the block. So I think that's why you're seeing the fifty-foot wide corner lots throughout this entire area.
Not to bring up a sore subject, but you were an unsuccessful bidder on the Methodist church property, were you not?
Correct.
And. If I, how, how was the corner treated on that application?
Fifty by one hundred foot lots on, on the, yeah, correct. That, in the hundred, hundred by a hundred foot corner. Where the church is, they were subdivided into two fifty by one hundred foot lots.
Okay.
And it had the same situation, the, the mid-block fifty-foot wide lot, which the pastor retained. So. You already have any, a pre-existing situation where you only have a hundred foot lot depth.
Okay. Um, and in your opinion, um. The development of two new single-family homes is a vast improvement over what is on this lot right now, correct?
Without question, yeah. The, this property is just going to continue to go in further disrepair.
And the development is, in your opinion, consistent with the neighborhood?
Absolutely. It'll be identical to the two homes directly across Eleventh Avenue, fifty-foot wide lots.
Okay, um, thank you. That's all I have for Mr. DePep.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Hey, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Doug, uh, we'll start with you. Any questions? Then we'll go to Jerry and then we'll roll through the board.
Okay, uh, let me start with. Uh, just to convert, there are no other additional exhibits, no other additional testimony to tell them.
No, sir.
Okay, um, I want to go back to Mr. DeFaca. With regard to your view of the property as it presently exists, a hundred by a hundred foot lot. That clearly allows you to develop a nine thousand square foot lot, correct?
Are you, there was some noising, noise between that. Please repeat that.
With regard to the property as it is presently configured. Is possible under the R seventy-five zone to develop the parcel with a single-family residential home. Which is conforming to the corner lot requirements.
That's, that's correct.
I mean, you'd have to demo everything and those kinds of things, but it actually exceeds the corner lot requirements by.
Correct.
Correct. Here's, here's what I'm struggling with on behalf of the board. You're proceeding with a hardship variance?
Correct. That's the way, you know, John set up the C one, like shit.
I, 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 as to who's doing it or, or not.
Whatever, yes. The testimony was in support of a C one variance.
Okay. And, and that's usually something that's unique to that particular parcel that precludes you from developing it. With the zone criteria, within the zone criteria, correct?
Yes.
And with regard to R four, I believe your testimony as to why it qualified for the hardship variance. Because a fifty-foot. Width of a lot was common for the area and was common for the zone. Did I, did I make that correct? Did you say that correctly? Did I repeat that correctly?
Yes, the fifty-foot corner lot and the fifty-foot width of any lot in that zone is primarily typical. Or those, that R seventy-five zone has fifty-foot wide lots, correct?
And, and in fact, even at the block that you're talking about, one oh one. It's, it's really not the width of the, of the, of rest of the interior lots. That's the issue. Most of them are fifty-foot in width, but it's the depth. It's the hundred and fifty feet. That they have that your lot doesn't have, correct?
Correct.
And that's how they get to the seventy-five or seven thousand five hundred square foot area, correct?
On all but the corner lots, correct?
Exactly. I'm, I'm, I'm confining it to the interior lots.
Correct.
And as I look. With regard to this particular site, lot ten. Did you have an opportunity to look at the history of how this lot was developed?
I did not.
Okay, I. As I look at it, and, and you're absolutely correct, that there, there are certain non-conformities. But is it true that with regard to the development of a site like this, because you have to have technically two front yards? You know, in this instance, on Eleventh and B. At some point, you designate something as a. Is that correct?
Something as.
As a rear yard.
Yes, yeah, the house fronting on Eleventh would mean the rear yard is the north side.
Right, the, you know, that, because that's usually one of the greatest depths. When you take a look, it's got two side yards in a sense. If you looked at Eleventh. And the northern side yard, probably the way this was developed with an eye towards leading the. Side yard as the rear yard, correct?
Correct.
Okay. For you subdividing the parcel. Where does hardship come in?
The lot is only a hundred feet deep yet. Every other house is fifty-foot frontage. So by matching the homes across the street on Eleventh. They're all fifty feet wide. You don't know how deep the house is by standing in the street. So by looking at the road, every house is fifty feet apart. We want the same as what's across the street, fifty foot wide. The fact that our lot happens to be short because. The side street of B many years ago cut it off. And yet we still comply with lot coverage, increase the setbacks. I don't think we need a variance on the setback on B Street. We'll get into that later, I'm sure. But the variance request is to put in homes that appear from the street. Every other home with the right setback, with the right. Size of a home and the fifty-foot is typical of the neighborhood. I don't think we're, we're varying yet. So by having only fifty feet wide, which is kind of a given. Now the depth determines our area. So by only being a hundred feet deep, we're locked into five thousand feet. If we had one twenty, we'd be locked into whatever the number is, six thousand square feet. That house was on a bigger lot, we'd have bigger lots. It was on an eight thousand foot lot, we'd be asking for four thousand lots. At a certain point, it gets to be, you know, too crowded for the lot. But at, at a hundred feet deep, we're matching. You know, half the lots in that zone, which I explained, fifty-two percent of them are fifty by a hundred foot lots. On the corner.
Try, I'm trying to get the hardship because you've got nine thousand square feet.
Right, but the hardship is the depth of the lot. We're only, we're left with a hundred foot deep lot. We know the width is also non-conforming, but it's typical of the area being a hundred feet wide. We don't have a hundred ten-foot wide lot. There isn't any one hundred ten-foot wide lots anywhere in that zone. So zoning calls for a sixty-foot corner lot. Nobody has a sixty-foot corner lot. I should say nobody. Eight percent of the people do. Ninety-two percent of them don't. That's just an historical thing, that, that grid from the old ocean view map, whatever it's called, they're all laid out at fifty feet wide. The whole part of Belmar, fifty-foot wide lots. The variance in our hardship is a hundred foot depth is existing, what we have to work with. That's the, that's the hardship part.
And, and, and I guess, and again, I'm trying to, trying to make sure we don't mix concepts as to C two and C one. Without your, if I, I, I think you answered it. You're saying it's a hardship. Because I want a subdivision, but if you don't get a hard, if you don't get a subdivision, you don't have a hardship of building a conforming lot in the R seventy-five zone.
We don't have a hardship, but we have, we have lots that are the same as every other lot in the neighborhood. So the hardship is that we want to be like. We just want to be like what's already there. Why should we be prohibited from being like everybody else is in that area? That's the hardship.
And Rich.
That area are fifty by a hundred.
And Rich, you're, you're eliminating a multi-family use and complying with the single-family zone.
Right, well, that's a benefit to the zone plan.
Right, yeah.
Negative and positive, right?
Yeah.
As far as the hardship case goes, we have. More than half the lots in that part of town are that size and that's what we're seeking.
And I can see that going to a C two, not to a C one.
Yeah.
Again, and, and I mean, you're the planner, Rich, but, and that's, and that's what I'm trying to work with here for the, for the board. And I unders- understand what Mr. DePep is saying. It eliminates a non-conforming, a non-conforming use. But that non-conforming use is allowed to continue until, as the Supreme Court says, it withers and dies on the vine. Withering and dying on the vine, you'd be able to have a nice, large-sized corner lot to, to preserve that R seventy-five corner. And, and that's what I'm grappling with and trying to present to the board. I, I, I'm assuming there's been no application that has been made. For a rezoning. I don't know whether it's appropriate question for John or to the applicant. In this instance, there's no application for that.
No, no.
No.
John, can I ask a question?
I'm done with my questions.
Just following up on Doug's que- uh, the question on the C one, the hardship. Was there any discussions with the uh, property owner on lot nine about potentially acquiring that property?
Yes.
Could you elaborate, please?
Um, there were some inquiries. I, I did it through the existing property owner and asked them, being that they're neighbor, and they said. There was no interest at all. So I, I didn't do anything directly with the lot nine owner, but I, I did it through the existing homeowner.
Okay. All right, thank you. Jerry, I'll turn to you. Any questions or that you have before we roll to the board?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um. I guess either Barry or Rich can answer this question, maybe. Um. Are you planning basements for these buildings?
Uh, I can answer, yeah. The um, existing residence has a basement and there's a, the built-in swimming pool as well. So we've. We've investigated that. Uh, we think we can do basements, yes.
I just wondered where the groundwork table was, if you knew.
I won't know. I won't know exactly until I do the demolition.
Okay, if groundwater is encountered, uh, as a condition, would you attempt to mitigate that on site and not release it from the site?
If groundwater.
If you find a groundwater problem, you need sump pumps. Would you provide infiltration on site?
If I find a groundwater problem, I'll be building crawl spaces.
All right. That's, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Uh, my question though, as a condition, if approved, if you would agree to, if you have to have sump pumps that you infiltrate the flow from that sump pump into the uh, on the property and not release it off the property.
Uh, Rich, are we able to do that in some sort of a recharge? I, I, I would agree.
Though, if he's got water problems, he's gonna be pumping the water from the basement to the side of the house, back to the basement, it's gonna be a vicious cycle, so we think you would opt for a crawl space.
Correct.
And, and, and that's fine, but that isn't always the case, uh, you're digging it in the summertime, everything's fine, uh, then we get into rainy season, and now we have sump pumps kicking on, and we're dealing with the aftermath, so I'm just asking if you would consider that going forward.
I'd say yes to that question, if we, if we do have to have sump pumps, it'll be discharged to a drywall system somewhere on the property.
Correct, that would be very helpful, and then you could have an overflow from there out to the street, but I just want to have some type of commitment from you guys on that, because you're building two houses here. Okay, so that's important to us.
One question if I can add, Jerry, what's going on with the roof leaders?
Just gonna get there.
Oh, sorry. It ties, it ties right in with where you were going.
It sure does, yeah.
Now, what, what we would propose to do is under the paper driveway, put a recharge pipe with stone around it, and that would serve as, as the connection point for the front and back of the house, and, uh, maybe run piping to catch the furthest corners and bring it back to this recharge area.
That, that would be a good solution.
Since the house has a basement, I believe the recharge system will be high enough away from any water table to function properly.
That would be a, an acceptable solution, uh, Mr. Chair, were you, are you okay with that?
Yeah, so we should make that a condition of the application.
Yes.
Okay with that, John?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, uh, lastly, um, the variant situation for the front yard setback on B. You, you don't show us where the house is that you referred to, that's, I don't know, so many feet away.
Right, that's the neighbor on ninth, that got brought up by, actually by Ted, was he said, don't you know that the house is real close to the road? So I used the aerial photograph we have from near maps and from Google Maps and double-checked it, and the structure is, the, the curb line is fifteen feet from the right-of-way line, and the house measures twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two feet, so that gives me about five or six feet from the, from the right-of-way line to the structure. Uh, that's existing dwelling, they have like a very small four-foot open porch in the front of it, but the structure itself, the heated part of that house is about six feet from the right-of-way line.
And you say that's on Ninth Avenue?
No, that's on B Street.
Oh, it's on B.
Lot nine?
Lot nine, the house adjacent to the north of us.
Yep. Okay, I mean, it, it, it might have been helpful to have a plan of that, I mean, we show the house next door on the east side.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as it is, I don't know if I would recommend the board not require that variance, because I don't really have any proof.
We, we asked for the variance in his own short, we still show fifty feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jerry. All right, we'll roll to the board for questions, starting with Rick.
Okay, get myself off mute. Um, I have no questions, I'll, I'll reserve my comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. or Mr. Forte, you abstained, uh, recused yourself rather, uh, Mr. Lindsay, please.
Lindsay, you're still on mute.
How about now?
Yeah.
Wonderful. My general comment, obviously, Belmar is, is tight, right? And there's not a lot of room to build anything, so it's becoming apparent that larger lots being carved into smaller lots is, is a trend, and I, you know, I understand that, right? Or I prefer the bigger lots, it's, but that's my personal opinion. I, I didn't see any, has there been any pushback from any of the, the residents who were notified being within two hundred feet, was there, is there any concern from anybody who was notified about the, you know, the pending, uh, application for that lot? The general neighbors there uh, unconcerned based on, you know, based on sending out letters notifying them of the changes that are pending?
We may not know till we open to public, Mr. Lindsay.
Yeah, we'll open it to public, Mr. Lindsay, we'll find out right there.
But, but to date, nobody's pushed back and said, well, you know, what the hey, what the hey, right? Okay. Uh, thank you.
It's not normally the course, usually we hear at the meeting.
Well, I don't know, there's a lot of meetings that get contentious. Thank you, thank you, that's, that's all the questions are, I, I've scrutinized the details and, you know, but let's move forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Uh, Ted, any questions?
Yeah, a couple. Um, so I keep hearing that the existing house is a multifamily, how many families is the existing house?
I'm sorry?
The, I keep hearing that the existing house is multifamily, how many families is the existing house?
Um, to the best of our knowledge, there's the, the principal residence downstairs and two, two tenants have occupied, uh, upstairs, I don't know if it's a, a rooming, rooming house, or if it's a separate apartment, but, um, two other tenants, so three, three use, users in the single, in this mixed-use building.
Is it actually listed as a mixed-use multifamily building, or somebody just renting out rooms in a single-family home?
I believe the latter.
Um, so just to confirm, the roof drains and anything coming out from sump pumps, if need be, they're all gonna be maintained on a property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, if granted, would you be adding any trees to alongside B Street and Eleventh Avenue?
Um, we would do, uh, typical foundation plantings, uh, along the front porches of both homes, as well as the side yard foundation plantings along B Street. I don't, I don't know what the opportunity is, or whether that would become shade tree commission or street trees.
But I think that area over there has a wide enough path between the street and the sidewalk to put trees.
Um, you, are you thinking type of shade trees or?
Shade trees, yeah, either along B Street on the actual property, uh, on their side yard, or along the front end side between the curb and the sidewalk.
Isn't that a shade tree commission? I mean, I, I'd be happy.
Yeah, I'd have, correct, it is.
I'd be happy to, you know, in the past, the shade tree commission makes a recommendation, and then either we install the tree, which would, in this situation, I'd prefer to just install the tree with my landscape package. Um, I have no objection to that in consultation with the shade tree commission, I don't, I don't want to make the decision and have the wrong type of tree there.
I got you, yeah, I'm not saying, I'm saying, are you open to putting trees around the side of those Eleventh Avenue and B Street?
Yeah, I would think each, each fifty-foot lot would probably have one tree along Eleventh Avenue each lot, and then maybe you'd be able to get two along B Street on the corner lot. So total, probably four trees, it would be my thought.
Very, just jump in real quick on that.
Subject to the utility poles.
Right, on, on eleventh, there are two trees now, they can be replaced, but there are two trees on eleventh. And on B Street, there is underground electric from the utility pole, uh, which is between the curb and the sidewalk. I'm sorry, between the sidewalk and the property line, so the tree would have to go between the curb and the sidewalk, which is, and there's, there's wires overhead, so it'd have to be a small.
That's if we just runs.
A small growing tree. But you wouldn't want the tree to be up in the wires.
Then, or it'll uproot the sidewalk also at some point in time.
And we said, if I can, just to try to bring people to where they're, where I think they're agreeing, that you would abide by the shade tree commission's recommendations for plantings at the site? Make that a condition of approval?
Yes, I would.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good. Uh, I took a look too, and if this is actually for Jerry Freda, on the paving detail, it doesn't seem that that is actually a permeable paver, and the, 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 like, the design and the, uh, installation of it doesn't seem to be like standard permeable design. Does the, does the paver itself have to be rated as a permeable paver and listed?
We would, we would make sure that the, that accordance to, uh, approval by, by Jerry, that it would meet the code as far as what percentage it is actual imperis, what percentage of the paver allows water infiltration. So there are products on the mark, we will certify that it is meeting the code of what is a permeable paver.
Okay, so you're gonna change the paver from what's on here? So you'll change the paver from what's on here?
We would spec something that would meet Jerry's approval, yes.
Okay, Richie, that, that would be done when we do plot plan applications and Jer- uh, a Vacaian's office reviews the plot plans?
Or we could do it now with, uh, compliance.
Okay. Okay.
And that would be a condition of the application.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ted. Tom, any questions?
Uh, yes, um, so a couple things, one is I am, I'm, I'm struggling with the hardship thing as well, um, and I guess I'd like to get some more clarity on that, because it occurs to me that you're actually creating your own hardship by doing the subdivision. Um, and, uh, I guess, I guess I'd like to understand a little bit better um, what the thought process is around, around the hardship.
Well, as an example, if this lot was, was a hundred by a hundred and fifty, we'd still want to knock the house down and put two houses up. If this, if this lot was a hundred and forty feet deep, we'd still want to knock the house down and put two houses up. The fact that it's only a hundred feet deep, we still want to knock the house down and put two lots up. The hardship is the lot shape, the lot size. It, taking away the non-conforming use is a benefit to the neighborhood, and we want to get rid of the old house and put up two, two new houses. So the fifty-foot width is the key. Everybody on the block's got fifty feet, and we want to put two houses up, the fact that it's only a hundred feet deep is our hardship. We would knock down the house if it was a hundred, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty feet deep. This is what happens, it's only a hundred feet deep, so we've improved the setbacks in the rear and in the front and the side, meet lot coverage, we don't have a far issue here, so we think that, you know, it's a benefit in general, it's a hardship also, we want to improve the neighborhood.
Go with C two. Yeah, why wouldn't you just gone with C two, because it sounds like most of your argument is we're bettering, you know, we're coming up with something that's better.
Yeah, well, you know, I could ask John another question.
Um, I was concerned that the uh, the idea of a substantial benefit outweighing any detriment uh, may, made that a hard go, the, and, and the unique shape of this lot fit into hardship, especially when you look at how the rest of the corners in this part of town are, are configured. I don't know if we want to move that to a C two at this point, or to proceed on both.
I don't think you're noticed for that, John.
No.
Excuse me? Be very, very clear as to what we're doing, I don't think.
I know.
Yeah. I'm not trying to be.
No, no, I, I, I don't disagree with you, uh, but I, well, I talked to Barry and, and his professional, um, it, the unique shape of the lot, I, we all felt, uh, fit into, into C one better.
Okay, thank you, uh, I do have a couple other questions, so I'm looking at, um, the subdivision plan, and I noticed that on the, the right-hand side where the, the, the new properties are, uh, it still says slate walk, uh, down the left and, and along Eleventh Avenue, are, are you intending to keep those sidewalks?
No, there's a note on the plan that says proposed five-foot concrete sidewalk pointing to, uh, sidewalks in front of the site, so.
Okay, I do see, yeah, I see that.
And that's on both the B, the label on B and the label on eleventh that says that.
Okay. Was that just a carry?
Like a carry. New sidewalks from lot line to lot line on B and on eleven.
Great, thanks. Uh, and then one more question is, uh, the will the, uh, the two properties, uh, the two homes that are built, uh, are, are they identical, or will they be identical floor plans, and will they have uh, be visually different from the street?
Will be different, Mr. DePac, to that question.
Two, two, two separate, two separate designs, different elevations, um, different floor plans. Um, we haven't developed housing yet, obviously, step one is to go through, get the, uh, try to, uh, get the approval from you folks. Um, but yeah, there would, we would not build two of the identical homes.
Okay. Okay, um, thank you very much, that's, that's all the questions that I have.
Thank you, Tom. I have a question for, uh, Mr. DeFalco. Um, on the, the survey or site plan, uh, existing versus proposed, uh, you're calling out six-foot-high fence uh, along the lot lines, are you turning that fence and running along the side yard on B Street of lot, proposed lot two, uh, ten point oh one? And is it running across the front of, uh, of eleventh across both lots?
The, the proposal is to remove the existing fence, which is a six-foot-high solid vinyl fence, and to reinstall a new six-foot-high solid vinyl fence right out the property line, presently, it's not exactly on the line. And then the line between the new lot ten oh one and ten oh two would have also a six-foot-high fence, yet a, as you approach the front setback area, it would drop in height to three feet to be code.
And where's it go out to?
I think we would, I think we would stop it right at the front, at the front setback, Rich.
At the front of the, of the porch or front setback line. I thought the porch, it might be a three-foot-high fence, and then once you pass the porch, there'd be no fences.
Is that what's being proposed?
Yeah.
And then there's nothing along B Street, correct?
No fence along B Street.
Not along B, no, but along the sideline between lot nine and lot ten oh one and ten oh two.
Okay, and then between the, uh, what's that, lot eleven as well on that side?
Lot eleven would have basically reinstalled. But anything within the front setback line would not be six feet high.
Okay.
Three feet high.
Um, Jerry, I'd, I'd like to ask you a question in regard to the waivers. Uh, we heard Mr. DeFalco talk about why he feels those, uh, the, uh, the requirement should be waived, given the criteria laid out, environmental traffic and storm. Could you provide us with the benefit of your thoughts on those waivers?
Uh, sure, um, I, I do agree, um, with Mr. DeFalco's interpretations. Um, environmentally and traffic, um, both negligible, negligible, um, at this point for this type of application. Um, stormwater, the site itself is less than a quarter acre, and, um, they're actually meeting our lot coverage. So from that standpoint, and the fact that they have agreed to conditions to handle the roof runoff and that type of thing, uh, I believe a waiver could be granted by the board if you wished.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If, if I could, just for clarifications on that, Jerry, a, a guy who, who may or may not have to write this up, you're saying the concessions on the stormwater, and that goes back to the pump overflow drain as well as the I, I, I get, uh, the, the perfect pipe under the driveway for the leaders?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Sort of like a reservoir.
I, I'm assuming that you want to see, uh, Jerry, also, and again, this was, since we're, we're kind of meshing it together here, um, that you want to see performance guarantees for any, any placement of driveway areas, sidewalk areas.
Um, that you want to see performance guarantees for any any placement of driveway areas, sidewalk areas, kinds of things.
Uh, yes, for sure. I mean, they're gonna have site inspections needed along the way and will be brought in by the construction department when needed.
And you would be recommending that uh, the separate services be provided to each of the lots, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That appears to be shown on the plans.
That that's what I thought and I I wanted to make sure the and that our engineer was recommending the same.
Yep. I will say there'll be uh some connection fees involved with connecting into sanitary water line. And it looks like all the electric's going to be underground running around. John, if 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 the variances are uh granted, uh, would you agree as a condition of the application that no additional variance will be granted uh for this uh for this property uh should it move forward?
Um, Mr. De Pep?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, there you go.
And uh, next, uh, would you also make it a condition, the application that uh, the project will be built within one year uh of receiving the approval? If such an approval were granted?
Um, clarify the term, uh, definition of the project, Jay. We would, we would complete the.
If I could, if I could, that you will, that you will begin to prosecute those aspects which require variance relief. I'm not asking you for a completion, but so stand. And and I and I say this and John can clarify me if he has a different interpretation of our ordinances. But generally with regard to perfecting your subdivision, you have a timeline that you have to meet that generally is much short of a year. So at least perfecting your subdivision, you have a timeline that's much shorter than a year. In terms of the variance relief that you receive, that you have to take debt, have to take appropriate steps to demonstrate that you are prosecuting the scope of the work to make sure that you've preserved your right to a variance. And that means either either the demoing and these filing of the maps beginning to have those things. Board is not asking you to have the project built within one year. If if as a result of a year later, we see that there's nothing to define that anything's happening on this property which preserves your parents' relief, you may be obliged to restart your process all over again.
I can agree to that, yes.
And John, John can provide you with additional clarification as to what he thinks you need to do to make sure that that's done. We we just, we just want to make sure that our applicants, if they are successful, don't stub their toes down the line.
I presume that you would add a condition that the existing building needs to be demolished in order to file the the new plots for this?
I I I'm assuming you're going to have to because you're
Right.
because your your building right now traverses the lot line.
Right.
That you'd want those demoed. If there's something you want to preserve, let us know at this point in time, but I I I'm assuming you'd normally be doing.
No, I I was just saying that, you know, sort of thinking out loud that that demolition process is going to occur relatively quickly, certainly within a year. I mean, in order for them to perfect their subdivision, that existing house has to go.
We can comply, we can we can comply within one year, yes. We can comply and I'm I'm okay with that condition.
I I'm going to suggest to you, Mr. Pep, and so your title company is going to tell you how that's going to go.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. De Falco, one question. I know there was a pretty lengthy discussion on the site triangle. Um, and the adequacy of the um typical twenty four foot or twenty five foot. What uh, what are we looking at in terms of a site triangle on this and are you going to add that to the site plan?
We'll add a site triangle and typically the ESHTO standard is a fifteen foot depth measured from the curb line. On Eleventh Avenue, the right of way is twenty feet from the curb line. So in essence, the visibility is all within the town's right of way and not on the property per se. If you measure the, and again, I can discuss this with Jerry, but if you measure from the stop bar and not from the curb line because somebody stops in the edge up to see around any parked cars, you know, in reality, you're not going to hit the gas thirty feet from the corner and just go. You're gonna pull up to the corner and look again, I would hope. So that's where the site triangle visibility actually comes into play. The sight line on the map doesn't really do anything for the driver.
Just for. I guess, I guess in an effort to to bring consensus, Mr. De Falco, to to the chair's question, you're gonna, you're gonna supply us with the site triangle as to where you think it is.
Creed is going to review it, yes, and I think.
Very good.
Agreement, yes.
You'll come to a consensus. If for some reason there's some planting that has to be removed so that we don't have a site triangle issue, we'll take care of that, correct?
Correct.
Very good. Uh, one other question, Mr. De Falco, there is a gray dotted line which ties into the inlet on B Street at the corner of B and eleventh, which I'm assuming was the old storm tie into that inlet. Will that be uh completely demolished and will that inlet be repaired and sealed?
Well, the plan was, there's a note on my plan that it says roof drain connection tying to the existing barbed string drain system. So we were hard piping the roof drains into the town's system.
No, that's not what we discussed as a condition.
I know, uh, Mr. Frida suggested infiltration or I suggested it. So either way, we will address the roof drain system, either it's hard pipe or infiltrated. I I think actual hard pipe is better.
I I'm okay with that. The abandoned line, I'm assuming that you're going to abandon, remove as part of demo and seal the inlet where the old storm lines used to tie in, correct?
And that's on my plan, a gray line.
Yeah, if you look at the inlet, it's got a great height of, it looks like twelve point four six on the corner and you see a dotted gray line.
I think that's on the propos- that's on the proposed subdivision, Jay.
Yeah, on the proposed.
Yeah, we're going to eliminate that and we're going to do the onsite recharge. That 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 line will be eliminated on our proposed plan.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Barry. Um, one of the concerns, and this is not unusual for this particular proposed lot ten point oh one and ten point oh two, is the paver area, the patio paver area adjacent to parking. And the concern is always, how do we prevent that becoming from becoming parking spot number four in both of these lots? Um, because it'll be, it appears at least based on the graphic, that it'll be the same elevation uh and therefore very easy for someone to swing in and park there. Um, and we know how much parking is a premium in Belmar. How can we prevent that from occurring or the potential of that occurring? And I'm not sure how, I'm just posing the question. I wish I had the answer, but I don't.
I don't think that's the case on the interior a lot. If you look, that's almost an impossible turn, right? Around the corner.
Yeah, but we know we've seen, we've seen people pull that, so.
Do you really?
You'd be, you'd be surprised.
Yeah.
We, Barry, we could do a short railing of some sort decorative fence or three foot high something, a column and some course numbers was just to delineate the two.
I'd actually be as simple as stepping that.
I'd I'd actually prefer to, I'd prefer to step at eight inches. I'd prefer to have a step up just eight inches.
Right.
Yeah, that's the better application.
Yeah, I think it just, you know, it prevents that from potentially becoming an issue.
We'll, we'll show two different elevations at that location, a six, a six inch or eight inch step, six inch step.
Okay. Uh, that's it for the questions for me. Uh, any other questions for the board before I open it up to public? No, seeing none, I'll open it to the public, April, if you don't mind. If you have a comment, please raise your hand. And April will bring you into the meeting. Please state your name, spell it and provide your street address.
Linda Sharkus, four hundred Fourth Avenue. Um, I'd like to just comment that I think it's a wonderful thing that Mr. De Pep is interested in buying this significantly non-conforming use piece of property. Um, here in Belmar, we've been focusing on more family friendly houses, so that application, if somebody were to come in, could turn into one more animal house, which we certainly don't want in the community. Um, and to Mr. De Falco's point, there are more that more short lots in Belmar than just that area he discussed. I live in one of those myself on Fourth Avenue, corner of Fourth and C. There's a house on C next to me is short, the one on Fourth next to me, the same thing across the street. So what Mr. De Pep is suggesting is um not unusual in our town and and I think it would be a beautiful addition. And and as I listened to Mr. De Pep's comments, if the block's only five hundred feet requiring an extra ten feet for a corner piece of property, we should probably reexamine zoning requirements if you can't get it without having another non-conforming lot within the block. That's what I'd like to say and I I hope the board uh supports this application.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you very much. Next, please. Anyone? Here we go.
Hi, my name's Stuart Lipset at two seventeen eleventh Avenue, directly across from the West Burn Lot. Um, I had two questions. I think Mr. Cavelli meant answered one. Is the slate sidewalk going to be replaced on the Western Lot on B and eleventh? Yes. That's it, it's?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good, because the slate in the winter is really odd war. The other thing is, um, I see you have underground electrical on the Western Lot, on the Eastern Lot. Where would the power be come? From the power lines behind the house or across the street on eleven?
The power line it proposes to come from the pole on B, down the pole, under the ground, run from B around the corner, past the first house to the east of the lot, so.
Okay, so it will be underground.
Down from the pole on B, all the way around the block, yep.
Okay, and um is there any price proposal for these new houses yet?
Could hopefully.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's a little early for that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lipset. Anyone else?
Uh, Eugene Kramer, uh, three eighteen Fourth Avenue.
Good evening, Eugene.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, I just want to mention, uh, according to the Belmar E R I, uh, the the subject property is within the Silver Lake Water Shed. And actually, uh, uh, I do have uh concerns about uh stormwater runoff. Um, looking at the subdivision plan, to the left of the title block is a cross section of concrete paver installation. The note calls for unilock type Camelot pavers. Uh, the Camelot uh is a nice cobblestone paver, but the Camelot isn't a perme- permeable paver according to Unilock. A Unilock, I looked them up uh on the internet. Uh, Unilock does manufacture pervious pavers, but uh Camelot is not one of them. Also, uh, Belmar chapter forty, paragraph uh two point four defines impervious area and uh requires compliance with Interlocking Concrete Paver Institute. Uh, technical specification number eighteen to take any advantage of the so-called fifty percent credit. Uh, and also, uh, the proposed uh paver uh cross section uh does not comply with the technical specification number eighteen. I guess I have a question, uh, wh- when you, uh, when I looked at the plans, uh, the zoning chart listed uh lot coverage. Uh, but it did not uh list uh impervious coverage. Uh, am I supposed to assume they're both the same?
They should not. We have we a calculation for impervious cover?
If if you look at the engineer's letter, he does break out um building from lot coverage.
Okay.
Sure, Eugene, whether you got a copy of that, but um, the engineer, our engineer's uh table on page, I don't even know which page this is, but page four.
Three of seven.
Yeah, three of seven. So the lot coverage for lot ten point oh one is forty seven percent, whereas fifty five percent is the requirement. And then lot ten point oh two is fifty percent, whereas fifty five percent is required for the building coverage. They're looking for a variance, they're at thirty seven percent in both cases. Uh, whereas thirty percent is uh the requirement, so they comply with lot coverage, Eugene, but certainly on the building coverage is it's the very, one of the variances they're looking for.
Yeah, okay, thank you, uh. I I didn't see the engineer's letter. Um, I guess what the the other question that I have, um, the area to be used for parking, um, is that considered impervious cover?
It is at fifty percent using the pavers that will be modified to meet the code to be permeable papers.
Uh, yeah, I know, uh, but where you're parking automobiles, are you considering that with so-called permeable pavers? Uh, uh, to to be a pervious uh coverage?
Yes, that's fifty percent credit for using permeable pavers.
And they are permitted where the cars are parking. Because keep in mind that water will sheet across and under that car, so the permeable cables, approvals, pavers will still do their job. This is not direct rain hitting them.
Uh, yeah, that seems to be in conflict uh with the borough's uh definition of uh in chapter forty uh, paragraph two point four. Uh, that seems to be in conflict with uh uh, the the definition uh of uh being able, or I should say, being able to take fifty percent uh credit for so-called permeable pavers.
They are going to change that spec. That was one of the conditions. So you're absolutely right. What's on here, the Unilock Camelot is not permeable table. They will be coming back in and our engineer will be reviewing that to ensure it complies.
It's well, uh, according to the definition of uh impervious area, um, it says all parking areas shall, impervious areas shall include all parking areas. Automobile access driveways and storage areas, patios, walkways, et cetera. Um, gee, uh, you you know, in in town here, uh, we get uh forty eight inches of measurable precip uh, per year and uh now, now we have a a ten thousand square foot piece of property. And uh, that uh precipitation that we get, that's all fresh water. And I guess the biggest concern here is, um, you know, how is that that water handled on its way to Silver Lake? And uh with with uh, not number one, by changing the zoning, uh, you go from, you know, R seventy five zone. Uh, maximum, I believe that allowable is uh forty percent. Uh, now, when you when you change the zoning uh to uh five, you know, R R fifty something. When you change the zoning uh to uh five, you know, R, R50 zone. The impervious allowable impervious cover, I believe it goes up to 55%. Uh, so net overall, uh, I think we're going to, uh, you know. See, see water going where uh it wouldn't go naturally. And actually, uh, there's the opportunity here. Uh, with the, a complete clean def- demolition that uh. That prop- that property uh would, would be a uh. Uh, a, a, a piece of property that uh would, would be in its natural condition. So there's going to be an alteration to uh runoff and effects on Silver Lake. That's about it.
Thank you.
Jump in real quick, Mr. Kramer, just to let you know, the existing lot coverage is 5,374 square feet. On the existing house, proposed total is 4,854 square feet, which is 10% less impervious coverage. After demolished than it is today. So I believe there's going to be reduction in runoff, not an increase. Just to get the numbers straight.
Yeah, okay, I, I guess you're trying to take credit for the sins of the past. You know, and, and, and by the way, uh, the, the borough did adopt a uh. A, a stormwater ordinance to comply with the new regulations that just went into effect at the beginning of this month. And uh. The intent there is, is to try to get back to the pre-developed uh runoff conditions. And I just don't see this development here as uh any, any step towards that.
Thank you, Eugene. The one thing I'll add is that they did agree as a condition to put in a recharge. Uh, system below the driveway of both properties. All right, anyone else? From the public? Whoever's still muted.
Yes, the store friend is on B Street between 10th and 11th.
Could you spell that for us, please?
S T E W Fernandez, F E R N A N D E Z.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, mainly the parking. I live on B right across the street from this house.
Okay.
I think I have it right. There's going to be three parking spaces on each um property.
Yes.
How, um, the corner lot. Right now they have, it's a parking lot, you can really get two, uh, two, two cars up there properly. How is the, I'm sorry, not looking at the plans, but how is the parking lot, parking space is going to be on the corner lot? Are they going to go behind the house on the side of the house?
Yeah, they're gonna be on the, they're gonna be on the north side of the house. Behind the house with a single driveway on B. Right now there's a 24 foot wide kind of a wide apron to get in there with three, two and a half, three cars can jam in there.
Yeah.
You're gonna cut it back to only a one car entrance and they're gonna park three cars behind the house, nothing on. The street like it is now hanging over the sidewalk.
Can we pull that plan up, April? Is there any way we can pull that site plan up? You can give me permission, I, I can pull it up.
It's not going to leave much of a backyard. But, you know, as long as there's three, because we do have a severe parking problem with that. The house you're talking about that's right next to it. Um, we, we have about six cars. They have a long driveway, but there's six cars on the street at all times and the. House right across there, two rentals.
Can you see the screen?
Yeah, I can see the screen very well, yes.
So these are the three spots on B. Taking the double, the double curb cut to a single. Bringing three in inside the property line, because right now they're so shallow, they're actually extending out into the right away.
Yeah, they agree.
Okay, this is three here and you can see on what's proposed lot 10.02, three in the side, uh, side yard. Which is pretty typical.
Yes, I, I agree. Monza and Miller um are like that. And you mentioned about the water drainage, some pumps. We have a very severe water problem in our street. Um, it really, all the water from 11th Avenue on B. Uh, right at that corner drains all the way. Um, down to 10th Avenue and those bubblers, they can't handle it. So you said it, which is good. Um, you know, if, if they need some pumps or any type of drainage from the. Gutters is going to be tried to be kept on the property, that would be great.
Yeah, they're gonna, they've committed to recharge systems, pipe, basically stone pipe. Uh, under the driveway to contain. And our engineer will take a look at that as part of their final design.
And there'll be new curbs put on B Street?
Only where uh they have to replace what was the uh, the double cut. They'll put in a new curb and they'll put in a new. Uh, new apron there.
Yeah, they're, they're in pretty bad shape. Um, so I, I really, they need to be replaced and also the sidewalks on B Street, there'll be new sidewalks, the slate will come out.
Yeah, we hit that one a couple of times, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Slate sidewalks come out as part of a condition and new concrete walks will be put in along 11th and along B.
Okay, no, uh, otherwise I'm, I'm okay with the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
That was it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks. I'm closing the public portion and I'm going to open it up to board comments. Uh, Mr. Lindsay, I'll start with you, please. You gotta take yourself off of mute, Bill.
Uh, yeah, I, I generally, I, you know, as a citizen of Belmar, not a planning board member. You know, the, the constant reduction of, of, of various sites, it's, it's a personal. Point, like I, I just, I like the wider lots and, and I think many people feel that way, but. Uh, I also see the, the value of, of. Getting rid of a, a non-conforming property in favor of two updated completely conforming properties. Uh, at this particular point, I, I've seen no pushback from anybody who's. Uh, would be immediately affected from around there. So I feel satisfied that any can, concerns I have have been satisfied.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Myers. Yeah, take yourself off of mute, Rick.
I just love to hear myself talk. Uh, I, I, you know, listening to uh all the questioning and. I, I didn't feel like I needed to take part in that around the hardship piece of it. It was kind of amusing because I, I'm not really convinced that they made a case for a hardship. With that said though, uh, and Mr. Lindsay touched on it. I mean, we're getting rid of a non-conforming use. I think the benefits probably outweigh the detriment, but I, I, I've. I, I've got to go on record to say I, I don't think they made a real good case for the hardship.
Yeah, thank you. Ted?
Um, I think pretty much went over everything that I needed. Um. The property, like they're saying with the hardship, doesn't really seem to meet any kind of a hardship, but if you look around, what I can say is there's no other. Hundred by hundred foot corner lots that I see. So it seems like all the other ones that were there have already been either subdivided or they were never there to, to, um, to begin with. So if we have to look at it that way, I can look at it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Cavalli?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, yeah, hardship uh discussion aside, I think it, it seems like a. A, a beneficial project and no pushback from uh, you know, the, the neighborhood uh or anybody nearby. So. I think it's a good, a good plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll offer my comments. Uh, my concern is that um. The, the point of hardship um was at least approaching lot, the owner of lot nine to try to buy that parcel. Um, that's a 5,000 square foot lot of 50 by 100. That may have allowed one of the lots to be compliant, the interior, but not the uh, not the corner lot. So we still would have been looking at some variances, even if he were successful in uh negotiating something to purchase that. I personally think this is better suited for a C2 than a C1. I think the applicant missed the mark there. Um, because certainly, uh, this is a much better design option for all the reasons that were mentioned. Um, but it's a tougher sell as a hardship, a better sell as a C2, better design option. So. That certainly would have been um my choice in terms of uh how to pursue this, but at this point. Uh, obviously we've noticed for a C1, so we can't switch gears midstream and go to a C2 variance, but uh we are where we are, so. All right, Doug, would you summarize, please?
Yes, this is a minor subdivision application, a lot into two uh for the uh. For block 101, lot 10, uh, the applicant, uh, you've heard their presentation with regard to the variance relief. You've heard the presentation uh with regard to their request for waivers, with regard to the request for waivers. You've also heard uh the testimony presented by our engineer as to. His belief that the waivers are appropriately granted in this instance. Any approval? Uh, my, my framing of the resolution of this instance is in the frame of a positive, so I vote yes as a vote for the application. The application will have uh the following conditions. Uh, that the applicant shall uh conform uh its development of its site. In accordance with the shade tree commission recommendations by way of plantings. We've heard the discussion with regard to the shade trees or whether or not they, they fit on the property or not. You've also heard that there'll be a condition concerning permeable surface that the pavers that are being used. And the credits that are being employed by the applicant in this instance are actually going to conform. And make sure that they are permeable surfaces after consultation with our engineer. You've heard testimony that there'd be a condition concerning site drainage for the property, combination of per- perforated pipe. Below the uh, the driveway areas as well as making sure that in the event the site is developed, well, however the site is developed. Uh, the applicant discussed that any sump uh developed will make sure that it has some type of container system there, but that any overflow will go in accordance with the direction. Of our engineer, so that basically have an infiltration recharge system. The applicant has agreed that it will place a uh. Performance plans to show uh. Uh, the site triangle for uh the property in that instance, making sure that there aren't any, that if for some reason. A portion of the properties within the site triangle, that there aren't any plantings that uh. Fall afoul of our ordinance requirements. Pavers, a- again, pervy, pervious pavers will again be used to develop the parking areas. Uh, the applicant shall also with regard to those patio areas to the rear of each one of the properties. Uh, the applicant has testified that they will uh present a diagram or a plan and will produce. Uh, as built conditions, so that there's a step up, there's been a mention of sort of an eight inches so that. To preclude parking from sort of sliding over into that patio area. Uh, and that is contained with regard to the area for the driveway areas. Get my notes, think that covers the things that. I think that covers all of the conditions. Obviously the properties will be developed of underground services, covering utilities to each site, the app. Appropriate performance guarantees, uh, providing for the provision of site development in courts with the uh plans submitted. That's your application this instance for minor site plan approval with variance and waiver relief. A yes vote is a vote for. Uh, I guess unless there's additional conditions that the members have that I've missed, as for a motion in a second.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the application with the conditions as summarized by Mr. Kovats as well as anything that may be a condition in recording that we may have missed? I'm sorry, I think, Rick, I heard a motion and Ted, I think I heard a second. Is that fair?
Second.
Thank you. April, please.
Mr. Lindsay? You're on mute.
Uh, I vote yes, and it should move forward. It's not a perfect project. None is, but I think it's overall beneficial to Belmar and, and proper.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Protonentes?
Yes.
Mr. Cavalli?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes. This is approved. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your time tonight.
Yes, thank you. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, any other business for the board, for the good of the order?
I don't think so. Can I get a motion to close?
Fine, just before you, hi- hypothetically.
Okay, good.
We did open it on the, on the application itself. We technically should open up to the public for any other topic. This is their meeting to be heard in March.
Anyone from the public want to discuss this application or anything else relevant to the planning board? If you'd like to, please state your name, spell it and provide your street address.
No hands.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder, Doug.
There you go.
It's been a while since we've been doing these. Can I get a motion to uh close this evening's meeting?
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Stay safe.